I assume that everybody kind of knows what the scope of the meeting is. And just to preface our meeting, this is not the first meeting we've had. This is probably, oh, the second or third meeting. To preface our discussion today, the fact that we're not here tonight to discuss design. That is something that's taken place over the past three years.
Two years.
And we actually have had a couple of town hall meetings to get some input. Not that there's always a potential for some change orders in a job, certainly this size, but in essence, the design that's up on the wall is basically the job that's going to be built. They may have a few issues with reference to, you always have issues with utility conflicts or stuff also, but other than that, I think they'll be minor. We certainly have enough servitude that is existing. We don't have to acquire any. But in all honesty, the purpose of the meeting is to let you know how we plan to build a job. In other words, how it's going to be phased in. I don't know that we've actually placed those, I guess we did and I probably left them back at the office in a good place for them. Barry has done an excellent job of setting out a calendar graph. I don't know if we brought them or not really. That actually shows how they anticipate. And I use that word with great caution, that we anticipate how the job's going to be built out in time. I mean, a lot of that depends on weather and how that cooperates with us. But all that being said, I think the job was bid at 240 some odd calendar days. Is that correct? So, you know, which came in a lot less than what we anticipated, which is a good thing. And this is not to discuss if we're going to be inconvenienced during those eight to 10, 12 months. It's just how much we're going to be inconvenienced. A job of this magnitude and this scope, there's going to be some inconvenience. But I'm going to let them go ahead and introduce themselves. Our first person I'm going to let talk up here is Heather.
Heather Klaiman.
Heather Klaiman. Heather is with DePlana's Design Group. Heather is our project engineer on this job. We also have representatives from our contractor, Barry, and we have representatives from DOTD. I would hope that you would ask the questions are mostly about the phasing in. In other words, how we're going to build the job, not so much as to why is this like this and why is this like this. We can explain some things that are going to be new in the job, like the different U-turns that you're not accustomed to. For instance, the removal of a signal at the Walmart intersection, what we call bulb-outs, which is new in our area. So, they'll be kind of explaining those things to you and then we'll go ahead and open it up for questions after that. Any questions you have, we'll try to answer them to the best of our ability. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Heather.
All right. Thank you, guys. As Tommy said, my name's Heather Klaiman with DePlana's Design Group. We did the design on the project. Just to kind of preface like Tommy said, I said that. Okay, sorry. To preface what Tommy had mentioned, a lot of this design is dictated by DOTD standards. You know, they have design standards that they follow. They have new concepts in street design that a lot of us are not familiar with, but that you will be seeing, you know, probably more and more in the future as time goes on. So, what I would like to do, because we have this nice pretty map over here and, you know, our wonderful firemen, they have this nice pretty building and I know they don't want us to mar up their walls. So, what we did is we put it over here. I'm going to come over here. I just want to kind of go through and overview the project, starting at Highway 1, going all the way to St. Patrick and kind of explain what's going to happen. You know, what are you going to see new? So, I'm going to put the microphone down over there. Hopefully, y'all will be able to hear me. I think I can talk loud enough. And people in the front, if y'all can, I don't know if y'all can maybe just turn around and I'll try to do this really quickly and then get back up. So, the extent of the project that we're working here, it's going to start actually at Highway 1 and I'll explain, you know, what we're doing at Highway 1. But it's going to start at Highway 1, all the way down, you know, through the current four-lane section, then through the three-lane section, pass Anneset Park, and then all the way up to St. Patrick. This project was kind of broken up into three areas. The first area is going to be 308 to Ryanzy. Here we go. From 308 to Ryanzy. You know, as everybody knows, that portion of canal, obviously, is already a four-lane, median-divided boulevard. It's going to stay that way. The one thing that we are going to be doing is it's going to be milled and overlaid, so it's going to be nice brandy black smooth asphalt when this is done. And we're going to put new curving in. You know, I know a lot of the curving along the medians is kind of broken up and then messed up, so it will be a nice, pretty new boulevard section. But as far as geometry, we're not changing anything in that section. Okay? From a signal standpoint, Highway 1 is going to get a brand-new signal and it's not going to be the strain pole. You know, the strain poles are where you have the two, you know, poles with the wire and the signals are hooked to the wire. It's going to be the new mast arm poles. And the mast arms are the ones, the steel poles with the arm that sticks out over the road. So, you know, those are, that's what DOTD puts in new now. If they ever put in a new signal in the southern areas, they do that. They stand up better during hurricanes. So, that's kind of the standard now. So, Highway 1 is going to get a new signal. We'll get a new signal at Highway 308. Again, that's going to change to a mast arm. Right now, that's a strain pole. Rue Le Donc is going to get a new signal, which also is going to be a new mast arm. Ryanzy is a mast arm signal right now, but it's all going to be changed out because DOTD wanted to put in, you know, the latest and greatest equipment and technology. So, that's going to be changed out. So, I'm going to skip this middle section right now and I'll tell you why when I come back to it. But so, the middle section from Ryanzy all the way down to Anneset Park. Okay, that's what we call, I guess, you know, not say phase two, but kind of our middle section. And let's go to the last section here, from Anneset Park all the way over to St. Patrick. Again, this is already, as everyone knows, a four-lane boulevard divided. The scope work that we're doing on the northern end of the project is going to be the same thing that we're doing on the southern end. We're going to milled and overlay. We're going to put new curving in. So, again, it'll be a nice, you know, nice brand-new, nice brand-new road. Over here by St. Patrick, what we're doing, everybody in sure knows the St. Patrick intersection. It's not a fun intersection to try to get through. So, what we're doing is trying to make this intersection a little bit safer than what it is right now. So, what's going to change? Right now, as you know, there are two through lanes that, if you're going northbound, there's two through lanes. Those lanes merge right about the same point in time where these guys are coming out, you know, trying to come out from St. Patrick. So, what's going to happen, as you approach this intersection, the left lane is going to turn into a left lane only. The right-hand lane is going to be a straight through lane where you can continue going northbound on towards Chack Bay. So, the left turn, when you get to the intersection of St. Patrick, you have to take a left. Okay? This makes things a little bit safer from a traffic standpoint. So, if you're in the right lane, you would keep going. You're in the left lane, you take a left. If you're coming southbound on Highway 20, if you want to continue southbound, you stay in the left-hand lane and when you get past, it opens up, you know, it opens up to the two lanes and you can continue southbound. We're going to add a right turn lane in and that turn lane is going to be channelized coming into St. Patrick. So, we basically get those right turns slowing down out of the main travel path. So, that's the key there. And the other important thing is, if you're on St. Patrick coming out and you want to go northbound, instead of having to take your life into your own hands and try to, you know, try to get in there, basically what you'll do now is you'll come out, you know, obviously stopping you, and then there's actually a channelized lane, we'll be calling acceleration lane, where you can accelerate before you merge. It's similar to old Highway 90, at New Highway 90 over in Racine. If you ever notice how that works when you come off of the ramp, there's this little acceleration lane kind of before you merge. So, that's what we're doing at St. Patrick. And this really is, you know, really just a safety improvement. We know that there are a lot of issues at this intersection, so that's what we wanted to do, was make some improvements there with this project. So, with that said, let's move back to our middle section of the project. And this is, this is where we have the big changes coming. As I mentioned, you know, there's this new concept in traffic design. It's called the super-street concept. And Chris, Chris maybe, is that the term that y'all, that y'all use right now?
I'm not sure. I'm not good at design, I guess.
Yeah. The super-street concept is basically you try to minimize left turns. Okay? Left turns are where you get into accidents and you get into, you know, you get into issues with safety. So, the concept that is being used more and more now is instead of taking, you know, left turns to get on the streets, they basically funnel you and you make U-turns. So, if you want to take, and I know it's inconvenient and we're not used to it, it's kind of like instead of taking a left to get somewhere, you take a right and then you make a U-turn. So, what we all know right now as a three-lane road, you know, with the northbound lane, the southbound lane, and what I call a suicide lane, in the middle, that's going to go away. And what we'll have is, we will have four-lane median-divided boulevard, just like we have on the north end, just like we have on the south end. But the difference is, we won't have all these open medians where we can just make a left, you know, in and make a left out. So, just to kind of explain what's going on, here's Ryanzy. You know, as you're going down Ryanzy, again, you know, you can see we've got two northbound and two southbound lanes. If you would want to take a left, and let's just, you know, let's just use the bank here. If you want to get into the bank right now, you get in the suicide lane, again, you take a left. Oops. And you go into the bank. So, now what you have to do is come into this U-turn lane, make a quick U-turn, and then take a left. Okay? So, that's the big difference between this new concept and what we're all used to. Again, you know, this is something that DOTD is going to in all areas. I mean, I would venture to say, not say that they're doing this everywhere, but most new big projects that you're going to see, they're going to have this. You know, they've done tons of traffic studies that show that this is a much safer, you know, way of moving traffic from one place to another. So, one of the other big changes that you'll notice here, we're all used to the red light at Walmart that we all wait 10 minutes in when we're going to the store. That light is actually going to go away. And what it's going to be replaced with is an intersection that we call an R-cut. Okay? When you're coming northbound, if you want to take a left into Walmart, you get into the left turn lane, you take a left. If you're coming southbound and you want to take a left onto Melrose Drive, again, you get in the left turn and you turn, left turn lane, you get on Melrose, which is the same as what, you know, we're pretty much used to. The difference is, if you're coming from Melrose to go up to Walmart, you're not going to be able to cut straight across. Okay? What you'll have to do is, you know, again, either come down one of the other streets, you know, come up and take a left, or you have to take a right, come to the U-turn, U-turn down, and go to Walmart. And again, I know it's something that we're not, you know, we're not all used to. It's going to take some time. But again, this is, this is the concept that DOTD is moving forward with. And look, Tommy can attest to this. We went through a lot of back and forth with DOTD, you know, trying to explain to them, look, you know, we're not used to this. You know, we're used to having what we have down on the south end of the project, but this is what, this is what they're going to. Yes, sir?
One little quick question. Looking at the map, the neutral grounds before and after seem pretty wide. How wide are the new neutral grounds going to be? Is it going to be green or is it going to be?
Yes, sir. It's going to be green. They're going to be about a lane width, probably about 12 feet wide, and they will be green. When they get really narrow in some areas, they'll be concrete in between, but for the most part, they are going to be, they're going to be green. Okay, so we talked about the intersection of Melrose again. You know, big change, the signal there, Glenwild. And I'll just kind of tell y'all, when we were first going through all the design with DOTD, they really wanted to get rid of the signal at Glenwild. To Mary Ashay's credit, you know, he went to Baton Rouge, you know, we called and said, guys, this is going to be a nightmare if we get rid of the intersection at Glenwild. And we had to go back and forth, you know, do some negotiating, but we were able to keep the signal at Glenwild. So, that's a big, that's a plus. I mean, you know, I think everybody knows what would have happened there if we didn't have that signal. The intersection is going to change a little bit. What we're going to have in the proposed, I said proposed condition, once everything's done, coming northbound, you'll have two dedicated left turn lanes to go onto Glenwild. You'll have a dedicated through and then you'll have a shared through or turn right to go eastbound on Glenwild. If you're coming southbound, they'll have one dedicated left turn lane at the signal and then a through, and then a through and a shared right. On Glenwild itself, going east-west, Glenwild on westbound at the signal now, where now I think we have a, it's a left turn and a shared right, we're going to have a dedicated left turn lane, a dedicated through lane, and a dedicated right turn lane. So, we'll have three lanes going westbound on Glenwild. Coming eastbound on Glenwild, it's basically the same as it is now. You'll have a dedicated left and then a shared through right. And obviously, Glenwild will get widened a little bit on the west side and then on the east side to transition to those new turn lanes. So, that's generally, I want to come down here a little bit, been talking about the southern end of it. Again, you can see the concept of the design is the same throughout. I think it's like every 500, 600 feet, these turn, these U-turn lanes are not just randomly placed. You know, there's a, there's a distance that DOTD requires for their designing that those U-turns be spaced, so that, you know, you're not going a mile down the road to get to a U-turn. So, you can see, we've got these turn lanes, you know, spaced out. We tried to place them, you know, as conveniently as possible, but again, you know, we're, they're dictated, we're dictated by what we have to do with the design guidelines. Fire station, obviously, the fire station, fire trucks need to get out unimpeded. So, they do, they do have an access connection here. So, if there is a fire, the fire trucks can either take a right immediately or they can immediately left. They don't have to go down the road and make a U-turn and come back.
Okay. What about truck traffic?
Truck traffic. Everything is designed to where, to accommodate the truck traffic. Point in fact, all these little, and Tommy mentioned it, these bulb-outs that we call it, that's what those bulb-outs are there for, is if you have a larger truck in order to make that U-turn, so that they have the room to turn and, you know, and make their traffic. There are two sizes. There's, there's a few of them placed, like this is the larger one and that's like an 18-wheeler, that size for an 18-wheeler. They really all can pretty much fit, you know, accommodate large trucks. But like a really large truck, that's what we figure is our design.
Did you have your, you know, how far are they coming into the servitude of Yiddor?
Into the servitude of what?
Yiddor. I live on the highway. Okay. And wanted to turn around and right in Yiddor.
Yes. Everything is going to be within the DOTD right-of-way. There's the, I guess, sir, when you say the servitude, you're talking about the right-of-way?
Yes.
Yes. That was natural.
So, now there's a telephone pole right with a, with a light pole.
Yeah. The light poles are typically located right on, right on the outside of the right-of-way line. So, all of these bulb-outs, everything within this project is contained within the existing DOTD right-of-way. Now, some of these bulb-outs do go right up to it. You know, they do. We had to, that's the only way that we could, you know, we could fit them in there. But they do go right up to the right-of-way, but they are contained within, within the right-of-way. I think that kind of goes over just generally the scope of the project. We talked about the signals, talked about Glenwild. From a Tommy's standpoint, obviously, Barry Construction is going to be the contractor for the project. Their current schedule and, yes, sir?
240 days.
Yes. Is that 240 days? Is that right?
I have two part questions. How many rain days are in that 240 days? And also, is that a penalty to the contract that if he's not finishing till 240 days?
Rain days, Chris, you can probably, can you answer that question as far as the rain days?
Well, it's a calendar day job, so we don't really count the rain days unless they can prove that those rain days, there's a certain few built into each month. And if they can prove that those rain days within that month affected their schedule, then they're granted those few extra days. But I haven't seen that happen yet on a calendar day job, not to say that it wouldn't. But, and what was the rest of your question? There are some damages involved in the contract. I'm not sure what they are, but it's a per-day thing and I would imagine it's probably around 3,000 a day. There you go.
Yeah. But I guess getting back to the schedule real quick, just trying to let everybody know, currently, the schedule is starting in January and then finishing in September. The reason for starting January, I think, you know, Andrew and I kind of discussed this, we don't want to have all this stuff torn up during Christmas holiday time. Right? I think that's going to be probably a, you know, a better scenario for everybody.
Just basically seven days a week?
Calendar days. So, yeah.
We may work some weekends, though. We need to make up some time. And your question in the back about the rain days, reincorporate rain days into our schedule when we bid it.
Can you just quickly describe, schedule-wise, between Part 1, 2, and 3?
Yes. Schedule-wise, as far as like how everything's going to be sequenced? Yeah. Good question. Okay. So, what we do as far as the plans, when we're designing this, we come up with what we call a suggested sequence of construction. We have five phases of construction as we did the plan. That is a suggested sequence of construction. The way DOTD contracts work is if the contractor feels that he can do a better job with a different sequence, it's more efficient, you know, which a lot of times they can, they're the ones that are out there building and they, you know, they know how to build stuff better than, better than we do. They have the ability to modify that sequence. You know, in talking with Barry, I think they're pretty much going to stick to the sequence that we had. Again, it could change. They may see something during construction where they decide that they want to change it, and that's a possibility. But just to kind of go through what the sequence is right now. Phase 1, again, I said there are five phases. So, phase 1, basically, the existing northbound and southbound lanes as they are today are going to remain. This part of the project is when, basically, from Ryanzy to Anneset Park, as you all know, you know, you've got three-lane road. On the west side of the road, we've got the drainage ditches. Okay? Where those drainage ditches are right now is where the new southbound lanes are going to be. So, what has to happen is all that drainage has to be shifted over to the west to allow for the construction of the new southbound lanes, these lanes. Okay? So, that's going to be phase 1. Traffic's going to stay how it is, so you'll be going down, you know, down the road. And what you'll see is on the west side of the road, they'll be pulling pipes up, they'll be putting new pipes in. This is the point in time when driveways are going to get cut. You know, this is going to be when we have the inconvenience of new culverts going in, old culverts coming out. Okay? And most of that, again, all of that construction is going to be on the west side of the road. That's where everything is widening out to, on the left side.
On the, excuse me.
Yes.
On the west side where the drainage is currently, will there be any drainage there?
The drainage, where it is right now, as I said, is going to be basically under the roof. Okay? So, all that drainage is coming up and we're taking that drainage and shifting it to the outside of the right-of-way, to the west. So, we're going to take up the existing drainage, shift it over, and put new drainage in. So, it'll still be an open ditch, you know, basically, just like you see it right now. It'll just be shifted to the outside of the right-of-way. Okay, phase 2. In phase 2, the northbound lane is going to stay where it is right now. The southbound lane is going to move to the existing center lane. So, if you can envision this as it is right now, you've got the northbound lane, that's going to stay where it is. This is actually the current center lane. Okay? So, now the southbound is going to shift, basically, everything's getting shifted over to this. Then the two new southbound lanes, these lanes are going to be constructed. They're going to, you know, start putting the base material in, filling in the existing ditches, putting rock down, putting asphalt down. Okay? So, that's when the bulk of that work is going to be done. So, traffic will be shifted over to the east, northbound here, southbound here, and they'll be building all of these new southbound lanes.
How are they going to get to our restaurant? I mean, this is all, this is going to happen in the major holidays. You're talking about Valentine's Day, Mother's Day.
Well, they are waiting until January, eight months. To give us all Christmas.
Major time.
No, absolutely. Understand, understand. They do have to keep access, obviously, and Andrew and Matt, y'all chime in if y'all want. There will, like, like Mary Ashay said, there will be some inconvenience. There's no way around it and we understand that. We just want to try, you know, to minimize. There are, it's probably a good time to mention it. Andrew and Matt brought some sign-in sheets that they have on the table over there, businesses, residents. If y'all can put y'all names down on the sign-in sheets, they will contact y'all. So, when it's time for them to come to your driveway, you know, and do the work, they will contact you and say, you know, let you know ahead of time, look, we're going to be coming, we're going to be pulling up the drainage culvert, putting the new one in, this is the timeframe, and they will coordinate all that with y'all. I mean, you know, it may be, it shouldn't be too long when your driveway is, you know, out of service. I mean, can y'all kind of preface on that?
It's not very long, yes.
Yeah. And, you know.
It's like you're directing, perhaps, I mean, you're going to be directing everything away from us.
Throw some shells.
As far as the traffic shifting?
Yeah.
Well, and that's just, that's temporary. That's not, that's not in the finals.
It must, it should work.
No, 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 no. This is, again, there's five phases of the entire project. You know, they're not going to be equally spaced phases, but, you know, as far as what the timing is, when this traffic is going to be this way high, you know, I can't, I can't tell you that. We can't estimate that.
And traffic lanes also get shifted over at times, too, during construction.
Right, yeah. And that's, that's in one of the player phases.
So, they'll be farther to the east during one phase of it, and then they'll be on the other side when they're working on that side.
Right. Well, where would the equipment be staged at that time? Are they going to stage it on the other side? So, if they're working on this side, would you stage the equipment on the other side? That still becomes a problem for some businesses.
Yeah. So, when we're working on the, when all the eastbound, the southbound work on the west side is completed, we'll do to the center, I can choose, I guess, that, just a second, I guess, we'll do the center of the widening, which will be the existing suicide lane, look at the new northbound left one, right? And then we'll have all the equipment in that location after that.
So, you know, as far as staging goes, there will be a lot of material, a lot of equipment. They're not certain yet where, you know, what property, what locations they're going to be staged in. That will be something as time goes on that, you know, as it goes further along, that they'll, they'll decide. But again, I mean, yes, they, there will be equipment in the right-of-way.
How far does the drainage just shift from the west? Do I have to look at the length of the lane?
Oh, it's going to be a little bit more than the width of the lane right now. I'm kind of just estimating, but I'd say probably about two or maybe two lanes. Because we're basically putting, yeah, we're putting two new lanes down, so it gets shifted over about two lanes. Basically, what you're going to have is at the right-of-way line, okay, at the existing right-of-way line, the ditch will start, it'll come down, come back up, and then you'll have a lane. So, we're going to be filling up the entire right-of-way with rain and.
Open up the channel, I guess. Roads down, they're already coming down through our, so it pretty much runs the full lane all the way down to the pipeline there. Okay? So, what's going to happen with the traffic that's going to be forced, not forced, but it's going to have an increase of traffic down that road? What plans are you going to minimize some of that? And what will happen with the 18-wheeler traffic down that road? Because that will tear up that road considerably.
Well, a good point about the 18-wheelers, I think one of the reasons why we were able to keep the signal here at Glenwild, that was one of the points that we made to DOTD is, look, you know, Glenwild has kind of become, for better or for worse, has become somewhat[1673.16] somewhat of a, of a thoroughfare, especially, you know, from here over to the west, and a lot of the cane trucks, you know, are utilized in this. So, they can still utilize the signal, it's, it's wide open, and then again, you know, these ball bouts, that's why all these ball bouts are spaced out, if for some reason they do need to make a U-turn, you know, they can, they can make the U-turn and use the extra width on the ball bouts.
But that's not going down roads down, when you're going down roads down, it makes, in essence, what's gonna happen is, they're gonna see that construction, and they're gonna avoid it. So, that means coming down that road down and running up that trip to get out onto the highway past the construction.
And, you know, for shorter, closing down the street, there's really not a whole lot we can do, and I mean, obviously, we can't close down the street.
Why the signage on the road?
Yeah, and then, I mean, there, there, obviously, there will be signage, there's, uh, you know, signage is a huge part of, obviously, the roadway construction, um, construction project. But, again, I mean, it goes back to, unfortunately, we all will be inconvenienced somewhat, you know, we just, it's temporary, you know, let's just all think of it as temporary and, you know, get through it, get through it, and, you know, we can't, we should reroute that up, you know, after.
Let me, just let me interject something quick, we're not gonna have any traffic on roads down or in the, in the residential areas, that's on, those are, are local streets, and, and we won't allow that. So, I'm not saying they won't try, cause they will, but it's gonna be our job, right there, Chief? Okay, Todd, and, yeah, all our good customers, that's gonna be our job to make sure that that doesn't happen. Uh, they're, they're gonna try, they absolutely will try, but I mean, it's, you know, in addition to, and I know Heather can't answer this, and they can't either, but the additional traffic issues, that's gonna be our responsibility to take care of that. And we're gonna have to adjust, everybody's gonna have to adjust, but we may have to actually have manual traffic controls at certain intersections at certain peak hours. I can see that coming up, it's not something we like, but it's something we're probably gonna have to do. So, for eight months, I know Todd and all his uniform guys out there are gonna be on their Ps and Qs, but we're gonna be incorporating a lot of uniform patrol out there to help with traffic issues. But the, the, the heavy trucks are not allowed on our local streets, period of the story. Now, when we catch 'em, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to issue 'em a warning if we catch 'em, uh, but if we catch 'em more than once, there won't be a warning anymore. So, but that's our job, that's really not, I don't wanna say that's not their concern, but that's really hard to make.
When you talk about phases of construction, you talk about phase one being the drainage work, is that through the whole length of the project, or a certain portion?
Really, everything on the southern end and the northern end drainage is there, and that's staying as it is. It's just on the section in the middle where we're actually widening, where we have to shift the drainage over.
So, when you're gonna be paving the streets, you're gonna do that in phases, certain blocks?
Yeah, so, so, I know, we started taking questions, um, we kinda got through phase two, like you said, phase two is gonna be when we start doing the southbound lanes. Then, for phase three, um, phase three, they're gonna take northbound traffic, shift it all the way to the east, southbound traffic, cause these lanes will be constructed out. Southbound traffic is gonna come to the outside lane here, on the, on the west side, and then they're gonna build all of the, the turn lanes in the, okay? So, basically, traffic gets shifted to the outside lanes, and then they build and develop the park. So, that's, uh, that's phase three. Phase four is basically gonna be the coal plains, they're gonna go through coal plains, all the existing asphalt on the south side, on the north side, and then come in with their final, um, you know, with their final lift of asphalt. Uh, let's see, coal plains, Glenwild Construction is also included in phase four, is that kinda what y'all still planning to do Glenwild in phase four?
Kind of, yeah, combination three and four, yes.
And then, um, phase five is basically when they come in and do the final overlay on everything. So, it's basically, just to kinda recap that, see if I get this right, everything stays where it is, do the drainage on the west side, okay? Then, they come in, they do the lanes on the southbound lanes, they actually construct the base for the southbound lanes, put the asphalt down, then they shift traffic to the outside lanes, do everything in the median, all the turn lanes, all the median work. Then, after that, coal plains, put your final lift of asphalt, and then, and then the project's done. So, again, it's kinda, you know, it's gonna be a lot of shift in traffic back and forth, but obviously, they'll have signage, they'll have construction cones, everything will be directed where it needs to go, so it's not, you know, it won't be a free throw, I mean, you know, they'll have traffic cones directing everyone where to go.
I have a question. I live in a condominium, it's just two blocks there, and they've blocked that highway coming and working on it, how do we get out of the condominium subdivision?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have access to all driveways, there'll be, there'll be periods of time that we will have to commit access as we're working through that area, but, um, I think there was concern about equipment, but in a way, we're gonna have the equipment due to where it's not blocking access, there'll be equipment on the job, materials on the job, but we're not gonna be blocking access to.
While the construction's going on, we can't use the highway, which is our only, really, way to get out, so what do we do?
Yes, ma'am, the highway will be, we will always be able to use the highway.
There'll always be a southbound, northbound lane.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the specific date that you guys are starting on in January, do you know that yet?
Uh, we have a week of mobilization right after the holidays, and then we'll start, we're actually excavating right after that.
Okay, so the, the first of January, right, okay. Second week?
Any other questions?
This is a day project, we're not restricted either way, but we plan only working days.
Again, you know, if something comes up and they have some unexpected, you know, lots of unexpected bad weather, and they need to make up time, like you said, it's unrestricted, so the possibility is there, but as long as everything goes as planned, we should.
One thing I'd just like to add, too, you know, we're gonna be coming here in January, and, um, one of the most important things for us as a company is to make sure that not only the safety of our people, but the safety of the public, so, we wanna make sure if you guys have any ideas or any concerns, that when we're out there, um, please talk to a foreman or superintendent on site, we will have a job trailer nearby, so, um, certain things we can't do beyond the contract, but, um, it is important that you guys get through the job site safely, and, um, and also for our, for our folks, we wanna make sure that we have clear access to driveways, and, um, our cones and barricades and barrels are in the right spot, so you guys can get back and forth through the, through the area. It is gonna be an inconvenience for eight months, we just ask you to work with us, cause we're gonna try to get done as quick as we can.
Just, uh, just to, I, it sets anybody's mind at ease, I guess, somewhat, you know, Chris, you be project manager on the job?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the construction engineer for DOTD, uh, my office is right here in Thibodeau, uh, I'll be on the job with my inspectors just about every day, uh, so if you have any, any questions during construction, you have any problems with anything, please call me, my number's 447-0943, uh, you know, catch me on the job, see a DOTD car, the trucks out there, talk to my inspectors, uh, we're, we're there just to make sure that the job gets built like it's supposed to be, uh, so we're, we're out there all the time.
You know, we have, we have a good working relationship with Chris, Chris has worked with us on a couple of the projects, Tiger Drive Bridge, it took a little longer than we'd like to see what happened. And, uh, but Chris, it's, Chris's work is extremely accessible, uh, Chris, Chris and the rest of the crews in the city, you know, we're able to follow and contact him, and I'm not saying it cause you guys are here, but I was extremely pleased to see Barry at construction, as our contractor, they're one of the best, if not the best asphalt contractor in the state, and I'm not saying that cause they're gonna take me out to eat after lunch, but in all honesty, you guys do, do it the best, so I have the most confidence in what they're gonna accomplish during this time. There is something, uh, that if you could address, I see Brad, Michelle here, they live on, on Glenwild Drive, and I know we're gonna be widening, uh, that section of Glenwild, but as I understand within servitude.
Yes.
But, could you address briefly how much it's actually, uh, Michelle's on the south side, and Brad's on the north side, how much you actually be going into, uh, the property beyond the existing curve that's there?
It's gonna be, I think, about a lane at the most, one lane at the most, and I've got the plans here, so if y'all wanna look at it, you know, in a little bit more detail, we can specifically look at that area, but let me see, like I said, I think off the top of my head, it's, uh, probably about maybe 11 feet, 10 feet?
And another question, I'm assuming, I'm assuming Heather, that's gonna be, uh...
It's not even a lane width, that is on the south side.
You have the typical Portland, see, it's, it's not gonna be asphalt.
It's not gonna be asphalt.
It's gonna, yeah, it'll be the same type of, yeah.
So, it'll, you know, it, like, like Chris said, it's, you know, maybe eight feet, 10 feet, and at the widest, at the widest point, but everything will be contained within, within the right way, within the Glenwild right way, and we can show you on the plans, you know, after, I mean, if anybody wants to look at anything specifically in the plans, Chris has it set, I have my set, we can, we can go through with it, I'd be happy to do that.
I have another question about traffic lights during construction.
Yes.
How are y'all gonna work the traffic lights? Cause y'all changing all of these lanes.
Right.
Signals get shifted to accommodate the lane changes.
Can we synchronize those two lights?
They, uh, they will be, Chris, Chris can probably speak to that, but, yes, all of the new ones from.
Yes.
Highway one, all the way to Glenwild will all be synchronized, right?
That's right.
Yes.
That's part of the setup of all the lights.
That's why they're all getting.
And, you know, that's, that's not to say it won't be perfect, but if you've got problems, if y'all see problems, at least, let us know.
Yeah. And I think with the new system, don't y'all monitor everything?
Yeah, you can all be monitored remotely.
Yeah, so it's, it's easy for them to.
Pull it up on monitor and look at it, so, yeah. Just let us know, if you see problems, let us know, please.
You know, we're not gonna go through an eight-month project without a hiccup, I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's gonna happen, but, again, as usual, if, if you as, as, as observant as I know you're gonna be during the project, let us know. I mean, you know, we're, we're there, we're at City Hall, uh, you know, I don't expect you to be contacting these guys, just give us a call, Chris is a phone call away, they're a phone call away, be honest with you, we can jump on it, if it's a traffic issue that you see developed, let us know about it, we'll get with the chief and Todd right quick, we'll try to address it as soon as we can. Uh, the best way to help us is to let us know what you see as becoming our, our problem during construction, uh, that'll help us a lot. We got a lot of suggestions on the Tiger Drive Bridge, uh, believe me, uh, not all of it, not all of it we could solve, but, but we got a lot of suggestions on there, uh, our biggest suggestion is, "Why can't you make 'em hurry up?" And I said, "Well, that would be nice," but, in all honesty, if you, you help us by letting us know what you see as, as an issue, even if it's only your personal issue, let us know, you know, we, we can, we can address it, uh, we're not so big that we can't do that, that's the, I guess that's the nice part of being a small city, we can do that. If you, and you were on the Baton Rouge in a project like this, you could catch a little tail, but we can help you if you just let us know, yeah, Mia.
At the corner of Rose Town and Freeway.
Two, yeah, yeah, that, I, I think what's gonna wind up happening, again, I'm not, I don't wanna speak out of turn, Chief, but I think we're gonna monitor that, you're gonna see some problems, some, uh, some manual traffic controls out there during peak hours, we're almost gonna have to, uh, because that, that, people are typically gonna wanna avoid construction, and they're gonna wanna go through the subdivision, and we can't stop normal traffic, we can stop the, the heavy trucks, but, uh, we're probably during peak hours gonna have to out there with, with all some of our uniform patrol and, and direct traffic, it's gonna happen.
They even have to put additional, before we stop at the corner of Bell Rose and Rose Town.
Then, yeah, again, we're gonna, we're gonna address that as it goes, and that may, may be something that happens, but, uh, as, as a project develops, we'll, we'll, I think we're gonna, we're gonna be observant with reference to what's happening at peak hours. Uh, I know, uh, Todd's gonna be up sleepless nights worrying about this with his guys, but, but we, we'll get it straight, again, if you let us know what you observe, and, and give us some feedback on it, we can address it, so it's not impossible.
Parking a large truck on 20 right now.
That's already not supposed to be like that, and, and I'll be honest with you, we catch 'em every now and then parking across from Popeyes and some of the other fast food places, they are not supposed to do that, right, Chief? They, I mean, they're not supposed, so we can ticket them, but they're not supposed to park there.
Once you park there, if, if you play hell trying to see around them to get out.
Absolutely, no, they're not supposed to be there, they, they know that, it's just easier for them than to pull in the parking lot and do it, so, uh, we, we just, again...
Right down with the paint season?
It's bad, uh, it's bad.
It's very easy to get a tippy right now.
Yeah, we will watch that, I know last year I noticed it quite a few times, and the biggest culprit is, I think, is Popeyes, because it's the easiest one to access off the highway, so.
The only area that I see, like, in the morning between 7:30, 8 o'clock, the traffic is backed up all the way to Chili's, Canal Boulevard at that time in the morning, and so, construction hasn't even started, so I anticipate traffic to be really bad in that area at that time.
Well, and I, you guys correct me, too, but I mean, the elimination of the light, this is after everything's finished, cause hopefully the project's gonna solve some of those issues, but the elimination of the light at Walmart, the synchronization of the lights all the way from Glenwild through LA1, I was not gonna stop it through it, will help us move traffic along much better than what we have now, so, yeah, that is a problem today, we're hoping that, that'll roll away.
So, what you're talking about, is northbound on Glenwild, people trying to take a left and just stop? Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, people coming southbound.
Yeah, friends from, 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 I mean, there's so much traffic that comes from the north side of town, uh, through town going, the nickels going, you know, the whole, it's just.
And one benefit, um, I like the mayor, the mayor's.
That's what would help the whole problem.
Which one?
A right-hand turn by the Texaco, that keeps two, two lines going across the bridge, turn right and you got a left, you're not gonna have a right lane.
That's the geometry on that south.
You always have, you, I mean, you can always, you know, a lot of people don't use that, uh, right turn on red all the time, some people just sit at the light regardless, and then they'll, and that's what happens, yeah.
Mia?
Yes?
Are you giving me closer information on the website?
We can, I'll tell you what we can do, if, if you, if you contact us at, at City Hall, we can actually send you PDS of everything you see on the, on the wall right there, uh, and, and you can look at it for yourself, and call us if you have any questions, uh, and if you look at, that was an excellent job of what Barry did, I don't know if you guys call it a calendar graph, or whatever you call it down there, but the phasing in of the project from day one to, to the end of the project tells you what they plan to do and how many days it actually, they anticipate it will take, uh, we can actually email those to you, uh, if you just call us and, uh, and give us your email address, we'll be happy to send those to you, not a problem.
Heather, you tell people that have, just whether it's a residence or a business that has one access to their business or residence, how do you handle that when they're trying to access it, or, or what happens to that business or property?
I think the only, let's see, uh, I wanna say the only establishment that has, well, even El Paso has two, um, you know, the only difference with El Paso is they don't have any access back to everything else.
Is there somebody here from El Paso, it's, uh...
Okay, okay.
On the lambs.
Okay, okay, yeah, so, um, you know, the only thing about El Paso, y'all do have two driveways, so, obviously, when they're doing the drainage work and they need to pull culverts up, they're not gonna pull both the drawers up at the same time, I mean, they'll, they'll face that.
When the project is finished, how much driveway?
Um, well, it's gonna come all the way back to, to the right way, I mean, this is generally...
To scale?
Yes, this is to scale, I mean, it is an arrow, so, you know, it's not exact, I can show you on the plans, the plans are more exact than this is, but, basically, what's gonna happen, we're adding two lanes, so you're gonna have 24 feet less driveway than what you have, than what you have before, and this is, this is the right way, generally, generally, right here, um, so, but, but again, kinda to Lucy's point.
Yeah, what about St. Delphine?
St. Delphine, um, where, where, okay.
He has a dentist's office that has, uh, 20 more Delphines.
It's just the street.
That's it. Yeah, the street right here, I guess, what's, what's the question, how, how is it gonna access you?
That street's not gonna be blocked off, is it?
No, because we're not doing any drainage work on the east side, all the drainage work is going to be on the west side.
No, he, he is on the west side.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about here, um, yes, so, when it's time to change the culvert out underneath the driveway, you know, they'll do one driveway at a time, so you'll always have access to one of your driveways.
I don't have a driveway, too.
Drew, do you have access on the offside of St. Delphine, y'all have access off the same, well, that's, I guess what's gonna, we, we, I guess the deal is that we won't have the street and your driveway blocked at the same time, can your patients access through St. Delphine, or no? I'm trying to remember. That is access, but you have a driveway.
St. Delphine is access.
Oh, that is your access.
Is right in the driveway.
Let me, let me ask a question, you have a situation like Drew's talking about, is there some kind of way we can accom, and I guess there is, there's always a way, to accommodate them in a situation where they don't have an alternate access, we, we could come out and maybe do that on a, on a Saturday or Sunday where, you know, you have, I know it won't have, we don't have many situations like that, but I mean, for him to lose, he's a dentist, uh, for him to lose, you know, a whole day.
We'll work with you on it, what we'll do is, we'll try to find a time when we plan to do it, and if it doesn't work for you, we'll have discussions with you, Andrew, we'll have discussions with you and make sure it's convenient for you, we'll try to do, again, the least disruption is possible, it will be a little inconvenient at times, but we'll work with you on it.
No, we, we did do a, we did have a couple of visits, and I'm not talking about with, with, uh, some of the, the assistant secretaries, or assist, we actually had an audience quiet with, with Secretary Labar, actually, Troy and I went one time and bet with her, trying to, to convince her that we, we wanted to, to change the alignment to St. Delphine, that didn't work, uh, but we tried, uh, so, but to say that we haven't worked closely with them trying to get what we thought was the best job for everybody, uh, you know, that would be an understatement, if they worked really well with us. Again, this, if, for those of you who hadn't followed it closely, this project is, we have been working on this for over three years.
It's been a long time.
For over three years, so it's, it's been a long time coming, um, and I know, again, And I know, again, just like Tiger Drive was an inconvenience, this is gonna be an inconvenience, but I tell you, I was anticipating, and I, that's no, that's not trying anything bad about Barry, I was anticipating 18 months. Did you hear eight months? I mean, I was smiling after I heard that. So if, believe me, that, that Tiger Drive Bridge, Chris, I guess it, had they, they